All right, are we up? Are we good? Yes, can you hear me? I can't. Are we on? Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the special meeting of the Eldorado Board of Supervisors for Monday, December 12, 2016. And at this time, I would ask Supervisor Rinaldi, lead us in the pledge, please.
Please salute. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I believe Supervisor Novacel has some things she's dealing with, so she won't be with us today. But with that said, I'm adopting the agenda.
Move.
Second.
All's the favor, presumably, saying aye. Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask that we continue item number two to tomorrow. It's a closed session.
Okay, I would ask the motion maker to amend his motion to adopt the agenda and continue item two till tomorrow.
Amending.
Amended, second amended.
Second amends.
All right, all's the favor, presumably, saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five oh with Supervisor Novacel. Absent. Motion carries four oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Supervisor Novacel, absent. Clerk of the Board, number one, please.
Item number one comes from the Community Development Agency.
Good morning, Shawna Purvines, long-range planning. Good Monday morning. So we are here today, it's the second meeting at the direction of the Board from the August 30th Discussions on Measure E. Today, we're going to be primarily talking about the housing element. We'll also just touch on a couple of the other items from the August 30th Direction, including the SEQA discussion and the budget discussion. So first, we'll talk a little bit about the, just the background and how we got here. We'll spend some time on, in the discussion part, about the analysis that we did. We actually looked at this from two points. We looked at it from a map and from the text or policy. So we'll go through both of those and the findings that we made. And then probably spend more time on the recommendation. We've identified some options the Board may want to discuss and consider as we move forward with the implementation of Measure E. So the background, on June 7, the voters approved, passed Measure E. It amended the transportation and circulation element policies TCXA, TCXF, and TCXG. In our review, we looked at these revisions in comparison to both our general plan and California law. And we determined the potential regulatory barriers or economic constraints to the county meeting its regional housing needs. That was primarily our focus. We talked about the regional housing needs allocation. We commonly refer to it as RENA, and I'll probably refer to that as we move forward in this presentation. That is set forth in state code. So the, in 2013, the county adopted its current housing element, which is an eight-year planning cycle, and it did include the accommodation of our RENA for an eight-year period. It is identified as the adequate sites to accommodate that growth. And if a county during any portion of that period does not have the adequate sites or cannot show adequate sites, then it's incumbent upon the jurisdiction to meet that obligation. Our housing element was certified by the Housing Community Development Agency or the State HCD Department in November of 2013. And just a reminder.
And that, that's only every five years, correct?
It used to be every five years until SB 375. Once that was approved in 2008 for housing elements certified after that, it's an eight-year cycle. So since we were certified in 2013, we go to 2021. If for some reason we weren't certified, or for some reason we become uncertified, then we would be on an annual review basis.
Thank you.
Until certification is achieved.
Shawna, when you say the jurisdiction needs to have the allocation, so the 4,000 and change number of homes that we have to have, the requirement, by 2021, we don't have to have these all built, we just have to show that we have the allocation.
We have to show that we have sites to accommodate the building of those, but we are not, we do not have to build them. The jurisdiction doesn't have to build them, but the sites have to be available. And when I say available, that means they have to be available with the least amount of restrictions for development on those sites.
There cannot be barriers or constraints.
Not be barriers, yeah.
How does that help anybody to have the allocation just sitting there on a paper?
I, well, normally jurisdictions, some jurisdictions do choose to build them, but it's not a state requirement to actually build them. The state just requires that jurisdictions have the land available to be built when the market is ready.
So let me ask an obvious question, then. Obviously, in our general plan, we have to have sites to accommodate this housing, this particular segment of housing. And at the same time, we have to have the fewest restrictions. Measure E potentially could impose, I don't know if it'd be restriction, but a limitation on those. If that were to occur, what is the overriding factor here? The voter-approved initiative or the state law that?
We'll talk, let's talk a little more about what those restrictions are, and then that might be a question we can look at.
Counsel, I mean.
It's a county council question that I have.
I think we're going to get there.
Okay, we've already thought about this, though, correct?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
So Shawna, in a nutshell, it's like having shovel-ready sites, ready to go with the least restrictions, that somebody comes in and boom, boom, done.
Right, be able to come in. Generally by right.
Yeah.
Generally by right. So, and just a reminder, the housing element is one of the eight mandated elements of our, of a general plan. General plans are mandated by the state of California, but the housing element is the only one required to go to the state for certification. So, and that, that is, and as it stands right now, the county does have a certified housing element. Albeit, the State Department, HCD, is aware the county did pass Measure E. They are aware that the Board is holding these meetings to discuss the implementation of Measure E. They have not revoked our certification, so we are currently certified under the state, which means that we are eligible to continue applying for certain different funding sources, community development, economic development, parks and rec, those that are tied to the housing element. We can still apply. So this is just a quick diagram to remind you how we kind of get to the RENA. It does start with the state Housing Community Development Agency. They provide them to the COGS or the Council of Governments. Ours is SAICOG. And then SAICOG, then based on their planning, divvies them out to each of the jurisdictions. In our case, it's six counties and 26 cities, 28 cities. And in this case, and only in this case, is where the county actually does reach into the Tahoe area. Normally, we stay out of the Tahoe area, and TERPA is the one that is guiding policies. But both in Placer County and Eldorado County's housing elements, you will see us identifying and ensuring that there is an adequate land available to accommodate the allocation.
But let's be forthright here, we're talking about the unincorporated areas of Tahoe, not the city limits.
Absolutely, not the city.
Okay, all right.
Not the city, yeah. It's only our jurisdiction and our, which is the unincorporated area. However, TERPA still is the rules that guide the development of it. So primarily for this presentation, we're talking about the West Slope. So under this last allocation in 2013, the county, West Slope, was obligated to accommodate 2,357 low and moderate income housing units and just about 1,600 above moderate housing units over an eight-year planning cycle. And the eight-year planning cycle is, as a result of that, SB 375. So the 2008 general plan, Measure I, this was kind of a critical point for the county. Prior to 2008, the county did not have a certified housing element, had not had a certified housing element, primarily as a result of the 1998 Measure Y. There was numerous communications between the county and HCD, with HCD citing kind of three primary concerns with Measure Y and the impacts it would have on the development of housing. The first one was the effects of the significantly higher costs on off-site improvements that would be required, the increased cost of the traffic impact mitigation fees, and then just kind of the overall feasibility of the development of housing in the county.
So Shawna, I just want to be clear, make sure I understand. When the voter-approved Measure Y was, when that occurred, we then had an impediment to meeting the housing element, the housing allocations for Eldorado County until those were resolved, is that correct?
From 1998, correct. So yes, we did not have a certified housing element until 2009. And that was a result of basically two actions the county took. The first was the adoption in 2007 of the TIMFE offset program, which was a subsequent item to the 2006 TIMFE, our traffic impact fee program that was adopted. And then the second was the revisions to Measure Y in 2008 that were approved by the voters. After those two actions were taken, the state certified the housing element in 2009. From that point forward, we were able to, again, apply for the community development block, economic development block grants and some of the park grants.
So Shawna, the HCD concerns, what was the timeline when Measure Y was approved by the voters? When did HCD come in and say, these are the issues that we have?
The discussions began in 2002, 2003, because that's the, the county was in the process of updating its general plan. And so the, I think the original, the original adoption of the housing element was supposed to be in 2003, based on that five-year cycle. It didn't get adopted by the Board until 2004, but we had ongoing conversations from about 2003 till 2009, when it was certified.
And can we safely assume that these are going to be the same issues that HCD would have with Measure E?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this, we'll talk a little bit about this, the current cycle that we're in, 2013 to 2031. So these are just some, I, just some basic facts out of the current housing cycle. Right now, we have 148 parcels that are designated for multifamily that are totaling about 450 acres across the West Slope that are identified for accommodating the county's fair share.
And those are both in and out of the community region?
Correct. They're in community regions and rural centers. They're not in the rural region of the county. They can accommodate approximately 4,016 multifamily dwelling units when we look at the realistic capacity of that property. There's two reasons we do that. One, there's a primary objective of the general plan, to oversupply residential lands to allow for market flexibility. And the second is a state law called the No Net Loss Law. And that is, in the event, as I stated earlier, we're required to maintain an adequate sites inventory. But there are going to be events where jurisdictions are going to determine that a site maybe, you know, needs to be underutilized for whatever reason. By having that oversupply, we ensure that there's no net loss and that we're not constantly out there looking for new lands to achieve our adequate sites during that eight-year cycle. So we do do an oversupply. And we know about 70% of all parcels zoned for multifamily have a design control or historical overlay. This means that currently, under county's current rules, that that requires a discretionary review. Until such time as we adopt design standards that are to a specificity that gets us to a ministerial review or a building permit type of action, these 70, these parcels would require discretionary review. And as we've talked about, both, I think, in August 9 and August 30 on Measure E, that these rules, that the Measure E and the changes to the policy are primarily affecting the discretionary projects. We do, this is to your question, most of the county's multifamily zone lands are within the community regions near Highway 50. We do have a few that are outside, but they're on parcels that are restricted in other ways. Most of the roads that will reach unacceptable levels of service in the future without improvements are also near Highway 50, and that's just a direct result of the county's planning over the last 40, 50 years, where the idea was to encourage growth in and tight to Highway 50 between Placerville and Eldorado Hills. So that's where we're going to, that's where we're going to see most of the road improvements that are needed. And that adequate sites will face off-site infrastructure requirements as a result of the changes that were made to Measure E. So the adequate sites analysis, we addressed the sites that were specifically identified in the housing element as a result of TCXA and TCXF primarily. We determined which parcels may have new regulatory barriers, and we concluded that about 57% of the parcels are in areas where there's going to require off-site improvements during this planning cycle, so through 2021. Now, the exact.
It's going to require off-site improvement to build it out, or just off-site improvement, period?
To build that project, to build, yeah, to build that project. The uncertainty that we have is, we don't know the timing, the location, or the scope of any project.
That's dependent upon when someone submits an application to develop said land.
Right, so you may, you may actually have another project that, say, fixes an intersection or a segment of road, and then the affordable housing comes in after, then the off-site improvements may not be necessary. But because we don't know the timing of all the different projects, we had to look at this as if these projects are coming in now. So that, so we do know that it does create a potential general plan consistency conflict with the housing element and our state law. The next information you're probably pretty familiar with, the assumption and methodologies that were used, talked a lot about this last Tuesday, as well as part of the capital improvement program update. We did look at the historical growth rate of the 1.03% and the growth distribution of roughly 75, 25. And then, as I mentioned, we looked at the future roadway capacity deficiency, assumed no further roadway capacity, because again, we don't know the timing of all the projects coming in. Attached to the staff report is a site analysis map. This one identified the level of service calculated based on procedures and methodologies that were used in the 2010 Highway Capacity Manual. It displays the 2035 peak hour LOS, and it displays interchange locations, highway interchange locations. We had little yellow arrows, and I'll show you those on the next slide. And then the parcels that are highlighted in the purple are the vacant and underutilized parcels, the 148, albeit this is zoned into the community region area. Like I said, there are a few that are in the outlying areas. So this is the map that's attached. In most cases, you know, the roads with the development are within acceptable levels of service, so off-site improvements may not be substantial. The real pinch points are those interchanges on the highway.
So we're talking about the Camper Park Drive interchange?
Pretty much all of them, with the exception of Missouri Flat, in the community regions. So the Measure E amendments, the changes that were made in last June or in 2015, I'm sorry, 2016 versus that were adopted in 2008, it expanded the policies to also encumber single, more than just the single-family detached of five units or more. So it does now take in multifamily discretionary projects. And it would require those off-site improvements to construct those roadway improvements. And under 2008, multifamily was excluded specifically from building the off-site improvements. They were able to pay their TIM fees. And then, as part of the county policy, those TIM fees could be offsetted using state and federal funds, which then provided the reduced barriers to the development.
Okay, so let me see if I can wrap this up here, kind of hem this up. Before, if you're built a multifamily, you didn't have to make all these improvements. But because we're implementing Measure E as read, multifamily, affordable, whatever you want to call it, it's caught into this cast net of Measure E, correct? This wide net?
For those that are discretionary, correct. The 70% of those parcels that are in discretionary approval area, they would be required to build those off-site improvements, including right up to a freeway interchange or highway.
Can I ask an obvious question here? We've, most of the LOS, the intersections that have LOS levels that trigger Measure E are in the community regions. Most of the growth occurs in the community regions. If we have multifamily now, as well as all these other affordable elements, which clearly do not have the financial wherewithal to make all the improvements necessary upfront to complete the projects, we are, I don't know how we can possibly ascertain our housing element. This is a huge issue here. I mean, I'm seeing this, counsel, what am I, what am I missing here? It seems to me that Measure E, the big loser in Measure E, isn't the big developments, it's the ones we need the most, affordable and small houses. Correct me if I'm wrong here, I mean, I'm just trying to pin all this together here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe the staff will have some recommendations to deal with the impacts of Measure E as we go through the presentation.
No, but I just, I'm looking at this, I'm thinking it through. Am I off the mark in my observations about this?
Don't say yes.
I would say your statements, to the extent that they bring forth the fact that Measure E will have an impact upon multifamily development, is an accurate statement.
Okay.
And it will make it more.
Challenging.
Difficult for some of those projects. As Ms. Purvines said, we'll be looking at a project by project to see whether it makes it impractical or impossible for any individual project, but on the whole, your statement, that general statement, that Measure E has this impact, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Shawna, continue, please.
I have one quick question.
Go ahead.
The TIMFE update that the Board approved last week or a couple of weeks ago, the assumption was based on the TIMFE waiver for affordable housing of Measure Y, correct? So if we do moving forward waive the TIMFE for that, it's not going to impact our TIMFE program, an update that we just did?
No, and as part of that update you did, that the ongoing program still exists to offset the TIM fees. The, what, the changes to the TCX policies is the projects now will be required to build the off-site improvements and pay their TIM fees.
I got it. I just wanted to make sure that the numbers that we're dealing with.
Correct, no, that.
In the program are going to be.
They still go forward. Yes, they still go forward. So the adequate sites conclusion, Measure E changes to TCXA and TCXF has the potential to reduce the availability of adequate sites needed to meet the county's statutory requirements for our regional housing needs by about 57% through this planning cycle 2021. We also carried that out to 2035, and it's about 87% of those parcels. Measure E changes to policy TCXA and TCXF could affect 31 parcels or 260 acres, reducing the land inventory to just 190 acres. It could build, if built to the maximum realistic capacity of each of those sites, the possibility of about 1,716-inch units. However, that number is below the county's fair share by about 641 units.
A little bit of a problem, isn't it?
Yeah. So the majority of the remaining 76 acres potentially affected by Measure E are located in rural areas where we don't anticipate unacceptable level of service. However, they are in the areas like Comino-Pollock Pines and Cool where there's no public sewer facilities. So the site development is constrained on those. And the remainder of the available multifamily lands consistent are on very small parcels, generally four or less units.
Void of Measure E, they would still be in areas where they don't have access to.
Sewer and water, correct.
Sewer water, so.
We just don't rely on those to meet our RENA. We rely mostly on the community region ones to meet it. The additional units in the rural areas where there's no public and sewers, more of the additional units necessary for the.
It just adds the inventory.
Markability, correct.
Thank you.
So the findings is that Measure E could have the potential to impact the housing element by not meeting our RENA requirements. General plan and its implementation directives would be ineffective in minimizing the cost impacts on the county's affordable housing goals. And the implementation of housing element goals, Measure E creates potential general plan consistency conflicts with housing element and housing element state law. And again, these are general, looking at the entire program. It really needs to be looked at on a project-by-project basis to be, to determine a true inconsistency. So if we were boiling it down just to two items, it is the need to retain and meet the adequate sites for our RENA, and the existing mitigation policies in the general plan may no longer be sufficient to minimize the cost and barriers to development. So also attached to your, the staff report was a matrix, and this is where we went in and looked at all of the housing policies in the general plan. So this is just a quick summary. We determined that there's potential inconsistencies as a result of Measure E to nine policies in the housing element and 12 out of the 40 implementation measures. At least one policy in the transportation and circulation element, plus two implementation measures. One policy, or one objective, I'm sorry, in the public service and utility element, plus two policies. And then in the economic development element, there were two policies that we identified potentially.
So I got to ask another obvious question here. You have a general plan, which is a voter-approved document, which has policies in it. Nine or 12 of them are in conflict with another voter-approved initiative. Counsel, what, how do we, when we have two policies that conflict with each other, which path do we proceed down? This is tricky here, because some of these policies that I've read through that are in conflict, pretty major, when you look in the context of projects moving forward. How do we sort this out here? In brief.
Well, I think these are all valid questions, and I think that your staff is about to get to how to resolve them, because as you note, there are multiple paths that could be followed in order to remedy potential consistency issues within a general plan. And for example, those other policies could be amended in order to achieve consistency. There are other options that the county may have in order to remove some additional constraints on the development of affordable sites that might allow us to meet our housing goals. And so I think Ms. Purvines is about to get to those various options you may have in order to address some potential consistency issues.
Okay, we'll see if my questions are answered, or at least you may ask. Carry on, please.
So we're going to talk about some options for implementing this element. So the first one actually is the development and adoption of design standards, so that we can provide for ministerial review of affordable housing. This is actually something we've been talking about well before the adoption of Measure E. And we've talked about it not only on our multifamily sites, but also our commercial sites. I believe there was actually even a discussion as part of the budget earlier this year in April on developing of these design standards. What will be critical is the design standards are built and developed and implemented to such specificity that we get to a ministerial review. So basically, it's a check the box. If the project meets these certain criterias, then it's a building permit and they get to move forward. The second option is to develop an affordable housing ordinance. The county has numerous different policies in support of affordable housing. We've talked a lot about the TIMFE offset program. We also have the density bonus program. The ordinance would take those into account and add additional incentives, such as the design standards, or an in-lu fee for projects that are building, projects that don't have affordable, but they could pay an in-lu fee, a housing trust fund that identifies what those in-lu fees or the fund can be spent on and to help with the development of affordable housing. So it's just a more robust, comprehensive approach to the development of affordable housing in the county. And as I said, we have components of it, but this would, this would definitely be one solid ordinance with all of those components included.
Shawna, first of all, thank you for the staff memo and referencing which documents, if they had to go back to previous versions of the Legistar. One thing that I couldn't find is, for each option that you're giving us, what are the resources and the timeline? Are we going to talk about that when we get to, when county council comes in to give us recommendations, or is that something that you're going to provide?
So today, we were hoping to kind of walk through some of those options that you wanted, and those that kind of, say, floated to the top are the ones you were most interested in. We would then come back with more detailed information on those and timelines.
So how can we make a decision if you can't, if you can't even roughly give us an estimate of a time and resources?
I can roughly give you the estimate of time. And as I mentioned. And as I mentioned, under A, you already received that as part of the budget update in April. We already actually provided that information.
And if it's not really related to Measure E, that's no matter, if Measure E happened or not, that would have been something that we consider.
It's been something, yeah, the county's been considering for a while. It just further supports implementation under Measure E. And then Measure C is an actual removal of the historic, or the design control and historic overlays. So, as we mentioned, the 70% are under a design control of some sort, whether it's historical, Sierra. You could just simply remove that, and then these would be no longer discretionary. The first three items are primarily zoning orders. They would not require general plan amendments. So, they're just zoning amendments or new policies that the county would have to adopt.
And give me an estimate for the resources and timeline?
To remove it is minimal. I mean, that would just be a zoning change, you know.
About three months and a few hours of staff time?
Yeah, I mean, we would have to look to see if there is any environmental consequences on that, but it would not be extensive. The first two, A and B, are much more extensive. You're looking at numerous hours of staff time. I think the estimate on A, for the development of the standards, sorry, I don't know how to go backwards, that one is, that one came in for the full set of design standards for affordable housing and commercial, because we were looking at both of those, was about $350,000, absent any environmental review. And did not include the specific architectural designs for any community. So, say if a single community wanted something unique to them, it'd be about another $20,000 to $30,000 to build their specific architectural design standards for each of those communities.
Is that for A?
That's A.
That's A.
$350,000.
Less than environmental, depending on what environmental is necessary.
And then timeline? About a year?
About 18 months in total, just again, depending on the environmental review necessary.
So, if for every item, you can kind of give me the bottom line estimate, that would be awesome. I think supervisor would have.
Yeah, as I read the staff report and reviewed the nine options, items A through I, you know, it occurred to me that some of these options are not ones that I would hope we wouldn't strongly consider. I will give you an example. Altering the definition of worsen seems to be a very challenging and difficult thing to try to reach some consensus on. And so, the idea of, you know, trying to determine how much time and resources would go to that, I mean, I would hope that maybe we could figure out of the nine, if there are four or so, or five, that we may have consensus around focusing on. And the ones that may be off the table, we don't spend more time analyzing, you know, how much time and cost and resources. But that was just, that was my thought and approach to it, but.
But my approach is usually different. If it's something that it's easy to do and doesn't cost very much, and we get benefit from it, why not? So, I always consider the resource and the
But I would ask you, for example, item E up there, you know, would you want staff to do considerable or estimating on removing worst, or, you know, changing the definition of worsen? I'd be surprised, but
That is not a technical, that's playing with words and defining what worsen means. It's not necessarily as technical as some of the other ones. So, the ones that you really know about staff time and the timeline, I appreciate giving me a number for that.
So, D is
Hang on. Given the magnitude of what we're about to decide upon here, I'm more interested, what is the best route to take? Not how much it's gonna cost. No matter what we do, it's gonna cost us something. This, what we choose out of these options right here, is gonna affect this county, it's gonna affect planning, it's gonna affect the general plan, it's gonna affect this county for frankly decades to come. So, I'm more focused on what are the impacts of the options we take, and what is in the best interest of the county as a whole. So, I think I have a little different approach to it on that than you do.
Okay, so, I read the staff report. Based on the information that's in front of me, I know exactly which direction I would like to see it go, but at the same time, I wanna be open-minded and get more information so I can look at other options as well.
So, D, we'll talk about D, E, and F here. So, the D is reprioritize capital improvement infrastructure projects. This one, there is, this would be looked at annually, as you're looking at your annual review. There is
So, what you're saying is that annually, if an application came in, and then look at where in the CIP a project may help accommodate that, that would be?
Something to consider. So, you would just do that on an annual basis, looking at it?
That's fair.
We're not, I think there are going to be capital improvement projects you can't move around, but it does give you some flexibility under the CIP to do something, just as you said, accommodate, say, an affordable housing project that is coming in. The next two, E and F, these are general plan amendments. So, if I was to say staff time, costs, and resources, these would probably be the big ones. Because anytime you're amending the general plan, generally, it's a bigger effort. So, one, redefining the definition of worsen, or two, or F, is going out and looking for other multifamily lands that are maybe in areas where level of service is not an issue. But those would be both map and text changes that would be necessary in the general plan.
But I mean, just because we identify them doesn't mean someone's gonna build on it. I think that
We would have to identify and change, do a general plan amendment to make them multifamily lands. Otherwise, they don't meet the state requirement.
Okay.
Shawna, which could lead to other ramifications, because most everything that's been identified has been done so for a reason.
They're consistent, yeah, particularly with the local area plans
Yeah, multitude of reasons, yeah.
that were done in the 70s and 80s, yeah.
Especially with all analysis that was done on the general plan to get it reviewed. So, you start messing with one area, it's just like the community region and rural centers, then you start messing with the whole other side, which you have to go through full SEQA, and then, you know, it's a bad example, but, okay, so you're gonna move them out in the rural centers, because now, or rural regions, because now they've been identified to be a better area to develop. Oh, yeah, right.
But they would still require public services. So, you would need to be looking at, yeah, sewer and those going out and
This is a slippery slope.
Yeah. So, I think these are the last three. So, the next one is just consider project review level exemption. So, this would be exempting multifamily, or affordable housing units, just from the TCX policies. Basically making them exempt from consistency with the general plan policies, for consistency with state law. The last two, one is delay additional action until there's some determination by the state or the courts, and the last one is consider preparing initiative to amend the general plan, similar to what was done in 2008, to address the affordable housing. So, these are the ones that we came up with. There's probably other options out there. The idea today was to have that discussion with the board, which one of these you may be interested in, or some combination thereof.
And when you say
And then
Under I, when you say consider preparing initiative, you're talking about a voter-approved initiative. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, yeah.
Just like 2008.
So, Shawna, the difference between G and I, it's really the same concept. One, we go to the voters for an initiative. The other one, the board of supervisors decides to make that exemption.
The difference that we identified there really is G would just exempt affordable housing projects. And I is whatever is decided upon. For example, under 2008, it wasn't just affordable housing project, it was all multifamily project, not necessarily affordable.
So, since we're talking about the affordable housing here, right now, I and G, to me, the difference for affordable housing aspect of it, is one, we go to the voters to prove it, the other one, the board of supervisors. And then my question for county council, does the board have that authority to make these exemptions without going to the voters? And are we gonna get litigated if we do?
I think that's a very good point. I think that there's a potential, there is potential risk associated with crafting these exemptions to certain projects, to the extent it is being done to
Circumvent Measure E, which
Precisely.
Measure E still trumps at this point.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, though it is an option on the table, I think there's a likelihood that we would, I think I would urge you to seek the outcome of the lawsuit before taking such action. I think that particular issue is likely going to be addressed in one way or the other in the lawsuit, and I think that your board would be best served by awaiting the outcome of that before taking that type of action.
Okay, thank you.
But I would also point out that there's an option not mentioned here, and that's do nothing.
There is, that's H.
That's H.
There's options here that aren't listed, so, yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's kind of how I ranked them, is I went through all nine of them and thought either, these are ones I thought we should, we'll consider early action, ones that we should not consider, and then ones that may be await and see.
So, but H has to delay action. Do nothing is to do nothing. And if the state decided, decertifies our housing, but anyways, go ahead, continue. Where are you?
So, the next steps, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Roger here to talk a little bit about the SEQA and the budget. My desire would be, after that, to discuss further those options and those that you may want staff to explore further and bring back additional information. And with that, we would then bring back, you know, cost estimates, timelines, and, you know, what we foresee, the environmental review.
So, Shawna, before we go to Roger, is there any questions about the presentation?
I have one.
I have a few. Counsel, on page four of the staff report says, "SEQA is a state law that requires close environment impact projects. In case of previous proposed, appropriate Measure E presented on August 30th, there would be no environmental impacts, and the adoption and interpretation could be exempt from SEQA." My understanding of SEQA is that voter-approved initiatives are exempt from SEQA. Correct me if I'm wrong about that. I'm going by memory here, so I'm trying to sort that out.
I think this is the question that Roger was about to get to, but
Okay.
you are correct. The courts have established that SEQA review is not applicable to the direct adoption or the placement of a voter-sponsored initiative on the ballot.
Okay, so, let's say to implement a voter-approved initiative, which is exempt from SEQA, we have to potentially choose one or more of these options. Is that as well exempt from SEQA? In other words, had the exempt, the SEQA exempt initiative not passed, we wouldn't amend these, but we are amending these as a result of that. The SEQA thing, I keep hearing this come up over and over again. I'm trying to sort out, when does exempt begin and when does it end?
Yeah, and I would, I don't think that this is the appropriate time to get too wrapped up in some of the SEQA issues. I think you're correct to note that the subsequent actions that are being suggested today, many of them very likely would be considered projects subject to SEQA analysis, whether they are exempt from review because we determined that there is no potential effect on the environment as a result of that action, or there are some other applicable exemption. That's an analysis that would have to be taken at the time you decide on which particular amendment or other policy you are seeking to change. However, there are probably certain things that could be done that I think would fall within the general umbrella of this kind of SEQA exemption for voter-sponsored initiatives. If you were simply adopting something that would interpret Measure E, presumably that interpretation, it would have to necessarily be consistent with Measure E itself, that type of action I do not believe would be subject to additional SEQA review.
I agree.
But, again, if you were taking additional actions, if you were amending other policies of the general plan, you'd want your staff to evaluate that action to determine what level of SEQA review would be applicable. Now, having stolen a bit of Roger's thunder here
Well, Roger's not a juris doctorate, you are, so that's why I was referring to you for legal opinion. Thank you.
Roger Trout, Development Services Director. So, the slide up here was geared for me, that the idea of discussing SEQA at this point was really in response to the August 30th board hearing, where we had a resolution to interpret Measure E. And so, we interpreted your board direction as, does that resolution require SEQA? So, as Dave kind of mentioned, it was an interpretation of Measure E. We did not see that we needed to go through any elaborate SEQA review. There is a section in the SEQA guidelines 15061B that allows us to make that type of interpretation, because there's no environmental effect of making that interpretation. So, I just wanted to put that out there. That's in the Legistar text as well. The other two parts that were from the August 30th meeting that we hadn't covered yet was the quote budget and the other general plan inconsistencies. In fact, we did cover the general plan inconsistencies. Shawna went over the table with all the general plan policies. So, the only thing that was left over was the budget. And we had kind of a generic direction from you to kind of look at the consequences on the county budget, and we really didn't have much to go on, because we didn't want to speculate here. We wanted to give you some facts. So, the facts we do have is that the staff labor hours to date on interpretation of Measure E, application of Measure E, reviewing Measure E, everything staff had done was somewhere in the nature of $100,000 since the adoption of Measure E till today. And that includes long-range planning staff, transportation staff, development services staff, CJ and other folks, too.
Does that include board agendas, board time and all that? That's out the door.
Everything, everything we would mark down on our time cards associated with the project, yes. So, those are just rough numbers. I don't know if we answered all your questions from the August 30th meeting, but if you look back at that item, we had the level of service workshop last month. We have the housing issue here. We just talked about the budget, SEQA, and other general plan implementation issues. This was going to be staff's conclusion. I'll turn it over to Shawna now, but from my perspective, my message was, development services, and we're processing planning applications and implementing Measure E, we are doing it as you described in August 30th, as written, on a project-by-project basis as they come forward. So, that's what we intend to do moving forward. So, you will see affordable housing projects and non-affordable housing projects, residential, non-residential projects, coming forward to the Planning Commission and Board from this point forward with our best interpretation and application of Measure E as written.
But Roger, so Measure E is written, voter-approved general plan. We already know that there are policies in the general plan which are gonna conflict with Measure E. When we go down to check the box here, how do we, which, I mean, these are both voter-approved, one's a voter-approved document, one's a voter-approved initiative. Clearly, some don't match up.
Yes, that is bound to happen with a complex set of policies that are in the current general plan, as before it was amended by Measure E and also after. There's always room for interpretations by the board. That's what your policy board does, is interpret the general plan on a case-by-case basis. And so, right now, we've identified some potential conflicts and some potential solutions, which I think Shawna's gonna talk about, and I think that's how we resolve these problems and move forward. Thank you.
Any questions for Roger Trout?
Nope.
Roger, thank you.
So, with that, as I, the staff has concluded its presentation, we are looking forward to further discussion on the options presented. And as Roger mentioned, we are looking at it project by project at this time. We do have affordable housing projects that are in the queue, and so, some direction today as to how you would want to proceed or how we would look to proceed will help us with the review and processing of those projects.
So, Shawna, I do not, for me, myself, I don't have enough information to know A from B from C, which one's the best thing. We're gonna take a few minutes here, and we're gonna start with number A. So, you can pull the slide up for number A, please. I think it's number 20 of 25. And we'll just briefly talk about each one, so that everyone that came to see us today or is watching or staying up, is up in this dais right now, can know what we're talking about here. A, develop and adopt, design standards provide for minister review of affordable housing. Develop, according to the Housing Act 16, the county shall minimize discretionary review requirements for affordable housing. Standards may also be developed for minister review of commercial. Give me a quick thumbnail sketch of what this is really saying here. I think what we're saying is, we're gonna have some design standards that affect affordable multifamily housing, and how will this be a solution on a problem?
These design standards would need to be developed with such specificity that they no longer require the projects to have a discretionary review. They would be a ministerial review, meaning that they would essentially be a building permit that meets certain standards, setbacks, height, color, parking, shade, landscaping, all of it. Traffic, all of it would be
Per Measure E, correct.
Yeah, so we would be down to basically a building permit for those 70 parcels, I'm sorry, 70% of the parcels that are currently under a design review, making them discretionary because we don't have that level of detail in our standard plans.
Okay, so I'm gonna go by memory here. 60 units or more. Let's say we're building Let's say we're building, that falls under this, 60 units or more, which obviously, five minutes or falls under Measure E. How does this circumvent Measure E in terms of having to build the infrastructure off-site to accommodate the project? How does, having design standards that Roger can check all the checkmarks on, how does this satisfy Measure E?
It creates the projects to be ministerial. And under previous conversations on August 9th and August 30th, we talked about the application of Measure E to discretionary projects. Ministerial projects would pay their TIM fees, so they don't get completely, they still have to pay their TIM fees, but they may not be subject to the off-site improvements.
Okay. Go ahead, do you have a question?
May not.
May not.
May not.
What's the difference between what you're outlining here versus form-based? Is that what you call it?
Oh, the standard plans could go to such a level that they are actually form-based.
Which is going to help and apply to all development in our county.
Right, so form-based is actually parcel-specific. So, we would actually, so you could do standards that are still fairly general. Let's say if you're in this area, it needs to be this high. Or if you are a multi-family adjacent to a commercial property, your setbacks are this. Or if you're multi-family adjacent to residential, your setbacks are that. It's still fairly general. Form-based is actually on the parcel. We basically design every single parcel or every single intersection, not the road, the parcel, parts of that intersection. So, it's, that's a level of specificity that even goes beyond just normal design standards. But we have talked about form-based code, and it may be appropriate in some areas to reach that level.
If we go in that direction, is that going to make all the projects ministerial?
Those currently under a design control, correct.
Okay, thank you.
But I think it's important to focus on the may-not project.
The may-not?
Because if it's...
Oh, the ministerial?
Yeah, if it still makes the project unaffordable, then we still have the housing requirement we have to abide by. So, how do you do that? If we can sort that out and build into it to make an administrative project, those costs are covered somewhere, which we don't know because sometimes you get grants and this and that. And there's some unknowns there that, yeah, we could do, we could set up the best projects, but if the funding and the cost of them don't get there, we still don't meet the housing element.
Correct.
Okay.
So, Roger, what else?
Um, yeah, I just was, you know, more of a process thing. You know, I actually, you know, having reviewed all nine options, have three that I feel we should consider acting on, four that I think we shouldn't, and two I don't think we're prepared for or should consider that. But from a process standpoint, I actually wanted to wait until we did public comment because I might, that might alter how I view those. So, from a process standpoint, if we go through each one of them now and then we get informed by the public comment, we kind of missed that opportunity or would have to do it again. So...
Anyway, go ahead.
So, can we all agree that A is a good practice?
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm not going there yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm not going very far anywhere.
It's not going to help the, you just said it, so how can I not go there?
We've only heard A.
But you can go there. I'm not going there yet.
I'm not going there.
I'd rather wait, but I'd go there individually.
I'm going to wait.
I'm just trying to wrap up A. So, can we all agree, or do I understand it properly, that it's a good practice, but it's not necessarily going to help the housing element, the affordable housing element?
Actually, it will help because it reduces the cost of design because we've designed it for them.
But not with the TIM fee.
It's, but we still have the TIM fee offset.
It solves one problem.
So, we still have the TIM fee. What it solves is the potential for the development of off-site improvements. They no longer would be responsible to build the interchange as part of their project. So, that's where we're, getting a project to ministerial may mean that it's not, that it does not have to then build those off-site improvements. So, it does help, it may not solve it altogether.
But there's still going to be a percentage of those parcels that you outlined that may not fall under this, even if you...
Potentially, and/or a project may come in and not want to stick to the standards and do a plan development, then they're different and they're on their own.
Yeah, actually, I'm a little ahead of where I wanted to be at this point, but I do agree with you. It helps, but it may not be alone, it may not stand alone as...
Correct.
Right, that was why I said, I kind of looked at, you know, three that I thought we should, four that I thought we shouldn't, and two that I don't think we know enough yet. But I wanted to hear everything first.
Well, I want to hear everything too. I have not made up my mind on any of these. So, let's look at number B, develop an affordable housing ordinance. So, we're going to develop an ordinance, regulatory framework for new residential developments to include housing opportunities for households of very, very low and extremely low income. So, you're saying Option B is to create an ordinance to deal with the framework in regards to low and extremely low income, correct?
Correct. So, this one would be multiple tools in the tool chest. So, in addition to, say, design standards as we discuss under Option A, in addition to the TIM fee offset program we already have, in addition to the affordable housing density bonus ordinance we already have, we may look at other items more comprehensively in a total ordinance, a full set of tools. And other items that we could consider are in lieu fees for projects that are proposing housing but maybe not affordable.
All right.
And standards and guidelines or rules...
In this case, an ordinance.
For the housing trust fund. So, once the fund is starting to build up, where and how do we want to prioritize those funds to go? So, this is just more of a comprehensive approach. It would take what we've already done and what we may be looking to do and kind of pull it all together under a single umbrella.
C, remove design control in historic combining zone districts to provide an administrative review of affordable multifamily development. I don't see how this solves the problem, but obviously, can you tell me how this is...
It just removes the discretionary review, so they become ministerial.
So, this, C is somewhat tied to A?
Yes.
But it may have some side effects.
Correct. So, now in those areas like Eldorado or Diamond Springs where your board just approved the historical overlay, those buildings may no longer need to achieve those historical reviews.
Can we go back to B?
Yes.
So, that ordinance, even if Measure E did not pass, it would have been a good practice to have?
Correct. Yeah, it's something we've been talking about for a few years. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Moving along here, D, when we talked about this, the CIP infrastructure. So, we've already gone through this. E, redefine the word worsen, which you kind of talked about, and worsen is, I won't say a general word, but we all know what worsen means. But under E, we would kind of give some definition of what truly is worsen, so...
No, worsen is defined in the general plan. So, if you redefine worsen, you would be amending the general plan.
So, we're going to amend the general plan to give a change to the word worsen, okay? F, identify additional parcel land that would support. We talked about that. Go around, that's very time-consuming. G, consider project review level exemptions to policies, construction... This one seems rather onerous. Gee, what am I, give me Gene a nutshell.
This would be exempting affordable housing from a finding of consistency with the general plan. That's what we spoke about. Yeah.
Is that correct? And again, by exempting that, it would make it ministerial, therefore avoiding... Yes, no?
It wouldn't necessarily make it ministerial, just exempt from consistency with the general plan.
You would just exempt it from those aspects of the general plan put in place by Measure E.
Okay. H, delay action. Okay, that's pretty stressful. And I, consider preparing initiative to amend. So, this is the initiative one where we're going to prepare a voter-prov, which is completely dependent upon the voters approving or not approving that. So, the outcome of that even is in doubt. So, it may not be a solution. It may be an avenue for a solution, which we don't know. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, any questions about any of the options? Nope. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open this item for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the item, now's your opportunity to do so. And come on down. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And, okay, well...
Maybe take five minutes longer.
I'm going to open public comment back up, but I...
I was trying to get my papers together. Kim Beal, Association of Realtors, Eldorado County. In regard to your options, I would like you to consider...
Kim, hang on. I'm reopening public comment. Go ahead, Kim.
Do you want my introduction of myself over again too?
No.
I like the options given you in items A through D. They do not require general plan amendments, nor going back to the voters for any kind of initiative. And it's something you could move forward proactively on now. Regarding item B, I would like to see that you also add affordable housing for the moderate-income earners to apply to B. Later in item G, moderate-income earner housing is qualified as being for the affordable factor. And I believe our housing element called it. So, if you could add that into item B, I'd appreciate it. By moving forward on these four items, I think it would be a way that we could get back to what our purpose was last December 15th, when you amended the general plan and you wrote new zoning ordinance requirements allowing for detached housing constructed on multifamily-zoned land. And because that would produce our largest supply of homes for moderate-income earners, detached homes, which is what they want to purchase, and it makes for our workforce housing, anything you can do to move forward with Measure E in mind to produce that, would be grateful.
And Kim, can I ask, when you say detached homes, you're talking to what we refer to as granny flats, correct?
No.
No.
I'm talking about individual lots with a home on it that is not connected to another home like you see with townhomes and condos and zero lot lines.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirkbone Parker Development Company. Last Tuesday, Supervisor Mikulak, who had a very interesting observation on when you were discussing your traffic fees. And the comment was along the lines of, well, would I build a thousand-square-foot house or a 4,000-square-foot house? And I'd go to the 4,000 because the costs are so high. My bet, too, is that your neighbors would be much happier with you with a 4,000-square-foot house than a 1,000-square-foot house. I would encourage you to do as much as you can to reduce the costs, not only of the building but of the processing as well, to get to a point where you can get an answer. I'm not in a hypothetical world right now, as you know. I'm in a real world where between two projects, we're proposing about 1,500 units that could be either affordable or moderately-priced housing. And I will tell you that the economics of the multifamily in this county, and obviously, the reduction in the traffic fee is helpful, but some things have been taken back. That land is worth about zero. I mean, it's very close to zero. And when you see our projects come forward, you will see fiscal impact analysis that you have to do. Recognizing that there's a need for higher-density housing, both now and in the long term, that's why those projects are there. They are nothing more than a self-imposed exaction to make sure that we can stay in compliance with our housing element. I lived through Folsom in the early 2000s. I think maybe even KAN did too. You don't want to be there, guys. You really don't. Now, that doesn't make your job any easier because in the end, y'all are going to have to make some decisions on some higher-density housing that's not going to make a neighborhood here or there or someplace else happy. But if you don't comply, it's miserable. And we even touched in Sacramento County as well in the 90s, and it was even more miserable than Folsom. So, I would encourage you to do as much as you can to minimize the processing costs associated with generating answers or getting answers. Measure E is a real challenge. I mean, it is a real challenge. And I know that I've spoken to several of you saying that I believe that the real challenge with Measure E was not figuring out how to fix the roads, but how to comply with your housing element. And I think you're hearing that today. So, again, I would encourage you to do as much as you can, but be very thoughtful about how you move forward with it. But in the end, you've got to make it so that people will want to do housing. And the economics that I'm discussing aren't just in general plan amendments. They are in parcels that exist today in this county that are not implementable because even if you had purely discretionary, I mean, even if you had purely ministerial opportunities to build multifamily housing, it is a real economic market-driven challenge. I mean, and it's across the board. I mean, you guys have made a big step with your TIM fee, but you've got fire districts, you've got park districts, you've got all these array of things. And then we heap this Measure E thing on top of it, well-intended or not. It's a real challenge. So, again, I want to concur with what Kim said. I think you ought to try to get as much moving forward as you can and make the process, and do your part to help make this stuff more easier to work. But the multi, there's a reason why there hadn't been much multifamily built in Eldorado County. It doesn't work. I mean, the land is worth basically zero. And if the land is worth basically zero, matter of fact, in some cases, again, I'm not in a hypothetical world. We've had some people come in and take a look at the multifamily parcels on the golf course project, which I know the neighbors don't like it, but they're about as appealing as you can get because you can walk to commercial and do those things. We had one of the largest multifamily builders in California come to us and say, for us to build those 330 units, we would have to put in $10 million. And that would be the land at zero. So, again, you know, we've got to get the zoning in place. We've got to get it in now rather than later because good luck in going back and getting it later. I think, as you noticed, Brian, when somebody said, well, maybe we'll go back and rezone some land. I know KAN's good at that because we did that in Folsom 10 years ago. That was very pleasant, wasn't it, KAN? So, you've got to get it in place, and ultimately, it will come. But it's a real challenge. It is a real challenge. And you just don't want to be in violation of your housing element, and you've got to think longer-term. And frankly, you folks are going to have to make some pretty tough decisions before too long here that not a lot of people, some people aren't going to be happy with you about. Anyway, thanks for the time.
Chris Payne, Diamond Springs. It all depends on what kind of mood you're in today.
What kind of what?
In response to my comments.
What kind of mood you're in today?
So, I thought I'd say that first. You know, it all depends on your mood. Okay. The last two are easy. I call those kick-the-can ones. One has to do with waiting for state or court-issued requirements. Okay.
Hold on, Chris. You know we never kick the can around here.
Okay, never. Okay. I...
I kick the bucket.
Do I get two seconds because you just commented?
Three.
All right. I...
You're going to get half an hour, Chris.
What kind of mood you're in.
Okay, I know, okay.
Your camp's on a roll today.
No, I'm trying to, sir, I'm trying to keep going.
He's in a good mood.
Okay, I...
Let's go with it.
Considering an initiative. It really doesn't get into the details of what the initiative might contain, but it speaks to initiative that would get us to the solution. Okay? So, I call those kick the can. The other ones are all very interesting because they all go through a whole spectrum. Design standards. I think design standards is critical to anything. I mean, not this subject, but anything. So, if you make something simpler, then that's a good thing. So, I kind of like A if we don't already have it. And I'd say, well, why don't we already have it? Because it seems so logical and practical. B, changing the ordinance itself to actually establish what the regulatory framework is so that then you can deal with what you believe is the negative side of Measure E. And in some respect, I figure, what, two years? Maybe a year to two years to get the ordinance in place, you know, just knowing the government takes that long? And so, I'm not so certain about B. But I do like the fact that it would give you, though, the funding, the affordable housing development on-sites funding, possibly through grants or whatever. And this goes to the question of required infrastructure, roads particularly. I'm almost finished, sir. Just bear with me. I'm moving right along.
Chris?
Okay. C...
Take your time.
Okay, C. The removal of the design controls historical. This kind of takes us in a whole different direction. I mean, essentially, we take, what, nine years, 11 years to get to where we are right now? And then all of a sudden, we want to dismantle it? It doesn't make any sense. In fact, Diamond Springs, sir, Diamond Springs is dedicating itself to administering design control and historical. So, I don't believe in C. Reprioritizing D, this is reprioritizing the infrastructure priorities with feasible. That's a possibility. You have that discretionary right to be able to do, to reprioritize. And then, to define what is considered worsen. I think there's too much involved with redefining worsen because of our general plan and what we've said for all these years related to what worsen is. We've modified it, haven't we? Supervisor Renelli, we've modified it, haven't we?
I believe so.
But in this particular case, I don't think we want to go down that path. So, I'm kind of narrowing in. Identifying additional parcels, I think if we got issues with parcels, and I would say to any parcel, related to general plan designation or zoning, I think if they fundamentally have some issues, then we ought to look for others that maybe not have issues. So, I'm not willing to just throw that one away. I think trying to find out and modifying our inventory is an important aspect of our day-to-day job. Always look to what the inventory is. And I'm almost finished. Okay? And then the exemption part. You know, you really do have a fundamental right, under certain legal responsibility, to consider exemptions as long as you can make the findings, that they are acceptable. That your goal, that why you are... that your goal, that why you are exempting meets the requirements that the exemption is supposed to be doing, and that it's statutorily correct and that you legally are right. So what I'm saying is, each one of these all has specific ties to our subject matter. Obviously, that's why staff put them here. But there are only some, and you say three, possibly, okay? And I want to hear what your three are. But there's only maybe a couple here that I would put us on the path because of the time and then of the cost associated with it. How's that?
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Chris Payne. Thank you.
My name is Jim Davies. I'm here representing Piedmont Oka Estates, which is what I call a small project. Evidently, some of the people here refer to it as a large project. We are trying, we have designed, we've been before the Planning Commission once already, exactly one year ago, on our project of one, at that time, it was 104 residential units and two commercial units. Due to the suggestion of the Planning Commission, we redesigned it, which is why it's been a year now. It took one year to redesign. Well, it took about 35 minutes to redesign it, but then it took a year to get everything in compliance again, because when you redesign something, now this report doesn't match, and that report doesn't match, and then you fix that report to match, and this one over here doesn't. It's a nightmare. So every time we come up here to try to put these deals together, it keeps throwing more time. And time, even for people like myself, is money. And it, not just a little money, a lot of money. The redesign of this project from January of last year to, hopefully, I'll be before the Planning Commission again in January of next year, one-year difference there, cost about $35,000. Now, if you do the math on that, that's $3,500 per house. Now, our project is what I refer to as housing that is affordable to the workforce of this community. I'm not trying to design and sell houses to people who need to work in Folsom, or Rancho Cordova, or Sacramento, someplace that they've got to throw their selves into cars, go driving 40 miles to go to work. And quite frankly, a large percentage, not a large percentage, but a good portion percentage of the people living up here even live further away. They're in San Francisco, in Silicon Valley area. You do have what they call the super commuters, even living up in this area here. And the reason for that is because the housing cost difference and the area difference. If I can put a nice 1,500 to 1,800, even a 2,400 square foot home on my property, build it out and sell it to somebody for less than $400,000, it makes it something that the people working for the county, the people working at the hospitals, the people working for the sheriff's department, the people working in the schools, people up here will be able to afford it, especially when you figure a large percentage of these homes are going to be under $300,000. And some of these homes are going to be under $100,000. Detached, single-family houses. You drive into your own garage. You get out of the car, you go into your own kitchen, your own bedroom, your own living room. It's your patio lot. But I run into major, major issues with the cost of the infrastructure. Now, like I said, I just had to throw another $3,500 per unit at this project, on top of that, because of Measure E. Now, that through the last six months of my delay has been waiting for how we can be in compliance with Measure E. We finally came up with the compliance that I can be in Measure E, but that's going to require me to build about $400,000 of traffic signals. $400,000 I have to pay on, excuse me, if I can expand about one more minute, I'll be fine. About $400,000 that I'm going to have to spend, because I've got 10 cars that will possibly leave my project onto Highway 49, anyway, Highway 49, go down to Diamond Springs, hang a left, and go past Racket Way. Somebody coming out at Racket Way might want to make a left turn there. They're going to have to wait, I guess, $400,000 worth for my 10 cars to get by, so they can make a left on Racket Way. I mean, the concept of it is comical, and it just doesn't make sense, but I can understand. I can understand. And I'm willing to do that. Now, that $400,000 is going to be passed, so there's another $4,000 into my housing that's affordable. It becomes pretty soon, now, throw the TIM fees in there, throw this in there. And by the way, it's not just that one intersection. There's three intersections. But most of them, a minimal amount from my project. The part that is bothering me is if the county is intent and willing and needs to have some housing that's affordable, that doesn't throw the people into the freeway system all the way down into the, where it does create major levels of F that cannot be resolved, then there should be some give and take here. In other words, I understand that we need to do this, but then why do I have to, according to state law, according to state law, I don't have to do that. I'm not required to build a traffic mitigation if I don't create the 100% of it, unless I'm sharing it with the county. Okay, fine. Let's skip past it. But you've got up here a way that you guys can exempt some of this. And that's what, if this is a project, I can give the county what the county needs. I can, and at the same time, I can expect or hope that the county can give to me what I'm going to need, so I can give to the county what the county needs. There's got to be some give and take here. There's got to be cooperation from all parties. I reach out for cooperation. I reach out to the neighbors. I reach out to these proponents of Measure E. Nothing happens as far as a give and take. It's all, it's my way or the highway. And it kills, it kills projects like mine. It's not a, I don't remember the word that was used. This is more than a restraint. It's a constraint. It kills these projects. You can't do it. It's financially impossible to comply with Measure E if you have to do everything. I will still be able to go there, because my cost of the land is pretty much what was just stated, is darn near zero. But it's going to require that I handle it myself. I can't even bring a partner in to work with me on it, because he can't afford to pay for the land and still build this out. I've already got the land, so I can do it. But I can't sit on it. It's got to go forward. And whichever one of these works to get it to where I can put this thing on the table and just get this stuff built, I think makes the best sense. It makes the best sense for me, and it makes the best sense for this county. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Fair observation.
John Heidel, Eldorado Hills. And I think there's multiple things we're discussing this morning. Affordable housing, or housing that's affordable, goes back many, many years. This is not new. RENA requirements are not new. I was on a committee working with Shawna 15, 18 years ago, with Art Marinaccio and a lot of other people, trying to figure out how you bring housing that's affordable to Eldorado County. After that period of time, we still haven't solved that issue. Land values, the cost of development, TIM fees, there's a whole lot of things that stack up against you in terms of doing that. The thing I'd like to propose is a next step that's a little different than what I've heard anybody else talk about, and that is going back to the proponents of Measure E with the alternatives that we have, and see what options work. I'm going to go back to the resolution that was proposed by County Council, after having worked with the proponents of Measure E, and finding some agreeable methods to smooth some of the implementation processes. This board, in my opinion, did not look at those with a full heart and open mind as to what could have been accomplished there. Shawna gave us a list of all of the conflicts that are in the general plan that was created by Measure E. A lot of those can be resolved relatively easily by accepting the resolution and moving forward with that. So I would implore the board to go back, revisit that resolution, now with the passage of time and stuff, and look if that isn't part of the solution. It doesn't solve the RENA issue, but it does solve a lot of other things associated with Measure E. And I think going back and working with the Measure E proponents to talk about these alternatives and find which ones we think are the most viable will minimize lawsuits and will get us headed in the right direction. Ultimately, there'll be decisions made that people don't like. That's inevitable. But I do think we need to take a step back and look at what can we do to work with the proponents, which know the intent versus the limited language that went into Measure E, to find potential solutions that move us in the right direction. Thank you.
Sue Taylor, proponent of Measure E. I have some handouts to give you. Hang on a minute. Let me make sure you keep those and then pass these out, because it has copies, you can make copies with. So many of the projects that I'm hearing discussed here were an issue in regards to having adequate infrastructure prior to Measure E. The developers are coming here to tell you they don't want to pay for the impact created by their projects. So Measure E was created to give the board of supervisors an avenue to deny projects that violate our general plan until the proper infrastructure is in place. It's always, most often, being misrepresented. So I've turned in these comments, and I'll just basically read them. According to the Measure E workshops, the county came to the conclusion that Eldorado Hills is not at LOSF. If the board of supervisors has concluded that we have not reached LOSF in Eldorado Hills, which seemed to be the focus, then why are we here today? In reality, the Measure E workshop should have addressed current deficiencies in the county's road infrastructure in order to establish current levels of services on our highways, arterial roads, and their intersections. And since that was never determined with all these things that you've done and had done by staff, there is no data to address the current housing element. The only data supplied by the staff report was an adequate sites analysis map. That's this map. A 20-year projection, which is beyond the scope of the housing element and does not include intersections. Do we have a map for today's level of service? A side note on this map, if it is legit, it shows that the Missouri Flat Interchange will not be at Level Service F even in 20 years, which is where most of the multifamily is located. According to Table HO28 of the 2013 to 2021 Housing Element, which I think I've given you, make sure that's right, this table, this is in our housing element. It shows that we have a potential surplus of 2,387, very low to moderate units, above what is required by RENA. Additionally, we have a potential surplus of 14,404 above moderate units over what is required for RENA. Again, why are we here today? We have adequate supply of housing that we show in our housing element compared to what RENA requires. In reference to State Code 65863, Measure E has not changed the number of parcels, nor has it reduced the residential density for any of those parcels identified in the housing element to accommodate RENA. Measure E did not change the Fee Waiver Offset Program, as far as I know, unless someone else has interpreted it that way, to assist affordable housing projects. According to the housing element, the county has anticipated 408 second dwellings to be built during the 2013-2021, but it does not appear that these units were applied in the vacant housing inventory for the very low, low, or moderate units for RENA numbers. So my first-choice recommendation would be to follow Option A. I think some of us have been asking for that for around nine years, and it seems like we do everything, every in-run around developing design standards, so people know what they need to do when they do these projects. Since 70% of the parcels zoned for multifamily, according to the staff report, uses have a design control or historic overlay over them, making them discretionary. Developing and adopting design standards will provide for ministerial review for affordable multifamily development on those parcels while complying with the general plan. And I don't agree that the only affordable housing that we can come up with is multifamily. I think there's a better way to do this, and I think if you had included some affordable housing in the Saratoga project, that may have been a better solution. A second recommendation is to acknowledge that Measure E does not impact our housing element, and stop wasting taxpayer funds on problems that don't exist. Thank you.
I would like to ask Sue a question. She's the proponent of Measure E, and a couple of questions for you. When you say Measure E did not change the Fee Waiver Offset Program for affordable housing, the language may not be there specifically, but when Measure E requires for the roadway to be built before any development, wouldn't that indirectly impact affordable housing?
There's a lot of elements to that, to even determine if that's a requirement. Is it in an area where there's a Level Service F problem? Is it discretionary? Is it something, I mean, I'm looking at...
I agree with you on those exemptions, but reading the Measure E language, it doesn't, when I read it, it doesn't tell me that the Fee Waiver for the affordable housing is not overwritten. So that's my interpretation of it.
Interpretation of what project where? I mean, how do you know? I mean, Measure E, like I said...
Hang on. If you want to answer specific questions, it's not a back and forth. This is public comment right now, so...
But she's the proponent of Measure E and C.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
It helps us all if we listen in dialogue and communicate. So I agree with you that you can look at every project and look at Measure E and decide, you know, based on those elements and criteria, the traffic and other criteria, but flat out, we can't say that Measure E does not impact the Fee Waiver for the affordable housing. So that's all I'm saying. We can take that offline and...
Well, it depends on how you determine and what the cost of their fee to mitigate what may be a problem or may not be a problem. I mean, that's just a very big conclusion, when you haven't done the analysis of where all of, I haven't seen the county spend the time looking at where these deficiencies are in the roads.
Okay, so I'm not talking about specifics, but for example, Measure E, when it was passed, we had an issue with it, and we had to have a Fee Waiver for the affordable housing. And did Measure E overwrite that?
Are you talking about E or what? You said Measure...
Why, sorry.
Well, it's interesting. I actually have it with me. I went back and looked at Measure Y, because I, according to the staff report, it said, we changed Measure Y to comply with the housing element.
Yes.
Well, if you go back and look at the impartial analysis from County Council, that was never mentioned in this measure when it was passed. So either that was done behind the scenes, that no one knew that's why they were voting for this, because within Measure Y analysis, and the ballot, and the measure, and the question, that was never brought up.
I'll take that to County Council. And then the other one, I don't necessarily, it doesn't add up, is you say it has a potential, we have a potential surplus of 14,404 above moderate unit. So how did you come up with that number? And what does, I saw that, but I don't know what you mean by...
This is in the housing, that's in your housing element. This is straight out, see the bottom? Your housing element. It shows what your surplus is, what's required and what your surplus is. What you have...
So I would like Shawna to address that. Thank you so much.
Hang on, Sue. Let's hear a proponent. Mr. Heidel says let's implement the intent. Was the intent of Measure E to make small projects unbuildable? And was the intent of Measure E to make affordable housing financially unbuildable? Was it, or was it not?
Is it your intent to follow the will of the voters and defend Measure E?
No, I... I asked you a question. You going to answer a question? You're going to answer a question with a question? He, what's the intent? You're the proponent.
Say it one more time.
Is the intent of Measure E to make small projects financially unbuildable realizing they don't have the financial wherewithal to build off-site improvements? And the second question is, is the intent of Measure E to make affordable housing financially unbuildable because they too do not have the financial wherewithal to comply with the requirements of Measure E? What was the intent? Was that the intent to make small projects unbuildable?
You know that's not the intent.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak on this project, this issue? Lori Parland.
Good morning, Lori Parland. I'm really concerned that the developers that are here today actually don't build affordable housing. So then that makes my mind wonder, are there implications of today's discussion that go beyond just affordable housing? And I want to remind you that high-density residential development is not necessarily affordable, and I think that's something that we keep missing. I think it was brought up during the Saratoga Estates discussion. That project was just approved. Not one single affordable housing unit was incorporated into that project. Why not? We missed an opportunity right there to start on taking care of affordable housing. We keep saying we want to do it. I don't know if there's really a will to do that. So again, high density is not necessarily affordable. I have a question about the way this is agendized. The action on here, it says discuss. It doesn't say receive file. It doesn't say choose an option. So you know me, I'm all about the Brown Act. What is the intent of today? Because if we're just discussing it and then choose an option later, that's great. I think that the way this was agendized, it's not clear to the public if you were going to choose some options, and therefore, maybe some folks are seeing this and saying they're just discussing it today. I'll come next time when they're going to make some choices. So I'm very concerned about the way this was agendized. You have to remember, Measure E was passed because people are tired of paper roads. That's the bottom line. So I know this isn't easy, but we're going to have to figure this out. We can't keep building projects on the promise of taking care of that infrastructure later. I've been following the CIP for several years now, and projects that should have been built by now, big infrastructure projects, are now down in the 2035 column of our CIP. So when you have moving target for building infrastructure, that's what these paper roads are all about, and that's what needs to stop. I like Option A. Those design standards are long overdue. I do remember conversations here, well, actually in Building A, but with the board, where you said several times that, you know, developers don't like the pick a color, what am I thinking, kind of way of going about development. So those design standards are long overdue, and I think we should spend the time and energy and some resources to do those. And lastly, the really big question here is, are you, the board of supervisors, the county, going to follow your constitutional responsibility to defend Measure E as the voters intended? That's the big question. We don't want you going around it. We want you defending it. Thank you.
Lori, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in the ad? All right, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. You want a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, we will be back here at 10:45. All right, we're back from our break. If I get everyone to sit, take your seats. Wish Sue was her. She's so good at yelling at everybody.
She's got that whistle.
No, she doesn't like yelling at everybody. Can I get, is my microphone on? Turn my microphone on. I don't...
Not very loud.
Somebody stole it. I've never, have you guys noticed that in the last year I've never used a gavel?
Because he can't find it.
Am I going to want to sit down, please? Please? Please, thank you. Oh, that worked good. You ever notice I never banged a gavel that one time?
Because you can't find it. It's lost.
Not a gavel banger. All right. All right, we're back from our break. So we've closed public comment. We are back from the break, and it's back to the board for discussion. So Supervisor Renelli, looks like he's... Ready to go? Your light is on. Brian?
Gathering my thoughts.
Thank you, Chair. So I thought, you know, following the report from staff and hearing from the public, I did walk in here with sort of a list of the nine that I felt would work and the ones that I thought were not appropriate, but I didn't want to say what those were until I was fully informed and had the opportunity to hear from others. First, I want to comment on the staff work. I really do appreciate the report. I really do like the Table 2 on page eight of 22 that shows the adequacy or the inadequacy of the sites, you know, nearing 60% to our housing element that is not adequate and nearing, nearer to 90% to the general plan. So, you know, that is kind of alarming, and that's part of what I wanted to understand back in August. That's one of the things I wanted to stand back in August before I was willing to take action on an ordinance. The other thing that I appreciate staff doing was creating the map that shows the actual deficiencies in the road. We did not have that back in August, and I was just not prepared to go there without knowing that. So I think that I do appreciate the staff report. It doesn't inform me better than on that day. I appreciate that we've had an opportunity to vet a little bit more the level of service, the prior workshop that we have. I like the list of issues with the general plan. This goes a long way in delivering what I was seeking or what I felt like I needed back in, on August 30th. So there are some things that I agree, things that I heard that I agree with and things that I don't. I think I just described why I was not prepared to embrace that resolution back then. I also think that there has been a request for ongoing discussions with the proponents of Measure E, and I think that that's not just a singular alignment with the proponents of the measure. I think it's also in alignment with HCD because we cannot make those decisions in a vacuum and think that they're not going to, that they're all going to be consistent with their thinking. And so this is an ongoing process, and so in part, I agree with that. But it has to be recognized that those discussions need to happen together, and it needs to be informed with information like we have just been provided. I want to go through the nine options in a very, very quick way. You know, gosh, surprised I actually agreed with Chris's assessment. He and I hit alike on a lot of those assessments. I was three that I thought we should act upon, and I will say which ones and why. Four that I did not feel very comfortable with, and I didn't hear anything today that really swayed me one way or the other. And two that it was described as kick the can down the road. I would just say, we should hold on that because we just are not ready. You know, the item A, the standards that allow for more ministerial actions, is something that I think that there is, has been unanimous consensus on. Frankly, our difficulties is that we get sidetracked on a lot of other things. We also have not been able to bring about the funding necessary in order to bring about all of those standards. And I'm thinking just up to the point of having design standards, not all the way to form-based coding, though that ought to be an aim. So, you know, the way I did this is, you know, I'm for A, but I don't believe that any one of these is going to do it. I think it's going to take a combination of these and then, you know, see how that informs us. Item B was the Develop Affordable Housing Ordinance. I like this one as well. I think the idea of the funding mechanisms and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, these are really good things, and we should be working on that. I think it will help this situation. However, I'm worried about the timing of that and how significant that would be in the impact to all of these. It will take time to do that. Item C, the removal of the design control and the historic overlays, I just think that's all bad. I don't know, I didn't hear anything that changed my mind on that, but I'm just not feeling it for that one. I think it undoes a lot of what we've tried to do, and I don't think it goes in the direction that I think is appropriate. I am for the next one, though, the reprioritizing of the CIP infrastructure, with the understanding that we do already, in a sense, do that annually, but I think, you know, a closer look at how we prioritize those projects, knowing that some of them, I think, are going to be very hard to alter without a significant impact on our roadway network. The next one worsened. I've already said, I'm not really feeling that one. It's messy, it's controversial, and I don't know if we wouldn't get bogged down into a compromise that would work for folks. So I'm not feeling it for E. I put that in the, I don't think we should pursue. It's also a very big thing along with item F, which is the Identify Additional Parcels. However, I think that that action should be considered if the inventory does not support the housing element. But I don't know that we're there yet. So I had that as to not act upon now, but I think that we do have the option as we move forward, that if we're not able to get further motion towards the intent of the voter-approved Measure E, that we should maybe consider that, but not until we're there. The exempting policies for affordable housing, you know, I think that that's dangerous ground. I don't know whether or not we could come to something that wouldn't be challengeable, and we might very well take half a step forward and two steps back. And so I'm not really feeling it for that one. You know, delay action, you know, back on that, again, you know, we would have to make the findings, and they would have to be solid for us to, and that would be a lot of work to get the potential findings that we may not be able to make confidently. And so that was why I had G in the no category. Delaying the actions until the state decides or a court action decides, considering preparing an initiative, we're just not ready for either of those two. And, you know, I don't know that I would call a kick the can down the road, but we, I just don't think we're prepared to make those decisions as of yet. I think if those three and a half that I mentioned do not get us, then I think, get us there, then I think we need to maybe consider doing more. But that's, you know, that's how I size these up. And I do think we have an obligation to get on with the voter-approved Measure E, but I think we need to do it in an informed and responsible manner. And I do encourage the communication and the interaction with the proponents, but we also have to give equal interaction to HCD on these matters.
All right, Supervisor Fredson.
Thank you. And Supervisor Renelli, you're on the right track, at least where I am for the most part. A few questions for staff. I'm not going to repeat the things that you mentioned, but for B, there was a comment that when we're working on the ordinance update, to consider the moderate income housing as well. So Shawna, how would that impact? Does it apply? Can you expand on that a little bit?
It can, and Kim was correct. Under the current housing element, we roll moderate into our multifamily lands, and that's because moderate housing generally doesn't achieve moderate price until you reach densities around seven to nine units per acre. And the only lands that allow for, under the general plan, allow for those densities are either multifamily or through the residential component of a mixed-use project on commercial. So we've already done that. We've already rolled that in. As part of the development of the ordinance, we could also include that as well.
And we talked about this during the break. Can you give us an idea of what the price point is for each category?
So single-family detached homes, generally, we say anything about the mid-300s, so 350, 360. It really depends on the mortgage and the interest rates and the points and those types of things. But somewhere in the mid-300s for a family of four would be considered an affordable-priced single-family detached home. Rents run, depending on bedrooms, so CJ ran and brought these for me. A two-bedroom is a little over $1,000 a month is considered affordable or fair market rent. Three-bedroom homes is about $1,500, and a four-bedroom apartment, I should say, home is about $1,800.
And what is a low-income housing? What's the price point for that?
For a single-family detached, that would probably, you're probably in the under 300, $275? Yeah, $260, $275.
Let me interrupt if I may, while we're talking costs. Your best estimate, then, Shawna, of what it takes to build that house? Land costs, permit costs, and just roughly?
Mm-hmm.
You know, obviously, per square foot costs and fees and possible road impacts. I mean, we heard a breakdown from Jim. Are those consistent? If you could run through those, so if you've got a, say, $250, $275 house, my quick math shows that we're almost into that entirely, so then there's no profit to be made at all. So somebody's building a house just to help us reach our affordable housing numbers.
Correct. I think you heard them discussing the land value, and based on just the fees, both county fees, which are really Tim fees, but then you add on fire and school and public water sewer and those, you're looking at somewhere between, depending on where you're at in the county, $60,000 to $80,000 in just those impact fees alone. And then you add land costs and then just the board fee and, you know, the cost of development. It's tough to get a home built, really, about $300,000 in the county.
And I know all that, but I just want to hear it because I don't think people understand that. And that's why the projects come in at $500,000 or higher in home value because that's where they can make some money. Well, that's what anybody does. If they're in business, they're trying to make some money. So I just want to make sure we understand that as we talk about affordable housing and whatever you want to call that, up to higher-end housing, and why that costs so much to develop in El Dorado County.
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry, Sheba.
Thank you, Supervisor Veykamp, for making that point. No, that's a great point, and maybe we can work on our developers to become nonprofits and... I didn't make eye contact with anyone specifically, but...
But as we talk about affordable housing, that's what we're talking about doing, is building projects that are basically that category, because if you're subsidizing this and doing it on grants and doing this and doing that, and developing policies and procedures and amending your general plan to do that, we might as well do it. That's what we're doing.
And most of our low and very low affordable housing is substantially subsidized to make that housing. Pencil out.
Then you got to, then you got to go, where's it going to go? Sorry, Sheba.
That's okay. No, great point.
So it's heavily subsidized on the low end of the affordability. It's only profitable on the high end, which is why nothing is happening in the middle, and we've got to fix that.
That's right.
And that was, I'm sorry, but that was part of the other reason why I was hesitant back in August, is there was no path presented that addressed the moderately-priced housing. And to the comments about it being, it was still paper roads for the, that's not addressing a critical need in our county. So anyways, thank you.
She was got the floor. Sorry.
So a couple more questions for you. Can you address the couple of questions? Can you address the couple of questions and issues that Sue Taylor brought up with Measure E? So, one was Measure E did not change the fee waiver offset.
It didn't. So, measure, the, the Tim Fee Offset for affordable housing is, is a part of the capital improvement program and Tim Fee Resolutions, what you discussed last week. So, those are still available, but it only offsets the fee. What Measure E changed was now requiring those multifamily units of five, five units or more to, to build their off-site projects in addition to paying their fee.
Which can increase the cost, which makes them more unaffordable. I mean, unfortunately, it's all tied together.
Correct. But the Tim Fee Offset, still valid.
Program and change.
Still exist. Yeah, it's still valid.
Even after Measure. Thank you for clarifying that. And then she has a chart here, I don't know if you saw this or not, from our land inventory.
The housing element?
Yes, and she's, and she has highlighted the bottom line that we have surplus of 2,294, and if you go above, it's 14,000.
So, the, the affordable housing, so it's a table prepared in 2012 for the housing element based on existing lands at that time and availability from 2012. The 2,000, or I don't remember the numbers exactly off the table, for the low and very low or the affordable housing that's above, we discussed that in the presentation. That is the oversupply required by both our general plan, major objective to oversupply our housing, and the state law called no net loss. So, we, we end up oversupplying by enough to give us that, that cushion in our adequate sites analysis, so that in the event a site maybe isn't adequate and can't be built at the densities we assume, we have existing capacity to cover our sites analysis, because we're by law required to maintain that adequate sites analysis for the entire planning period. Otherwise, we would end up having to chase new lands every time you make a new decision. So, that's, that's that one. The other one, that, that site, as I mentioned, this is the one and only time we do reach over into Tahoe, so that table includes lands that are available in Tahoe to meet or above moderate. So, I think there's, I, I, I think she said 14,000 in there. So, there's, you know, about 3,000 or so parcels of that is up in the Tahoe Basin. And then the rest of it is split between the community regions and the rural centers. So, the community regions, we actually have a really good handle on. We know where those properties are. We know that they're generally buildable because they have public water, they have sewer, they're inside the specific plans, the remaining ones that are approved specific plans, the remaining capacity that's in there. The other about 6,000, 7,000 parcels that we know can come in and build, pull a housing permit, those are counted in there. We really actually don't know. We don't have site-specific analysis on those. We don't know if there's access to the sites, if there's well available to those sites. We, we don't really know. We know that they have the ability to ask for a housing permit, ministerial housing permit, but we really don't know if they're buildable.
Thank you for answering that. And I want to thank Chris, because I did not have F as part of my items. I had it crossed off. But when you came up and the way you put it, yes, we should always, on an ongoing basis, look at our inventory and see where we're at. So, that's kind of a high level.
We analyze it every year regardless.
So, you already do that?
Yep.
So, now I have a question for County Council.
So, you don't have F off your list?
F is off the list, but with a, with a footnote.
Yes.
Yes.
Me too.
So, the items, again, I'm not going to repeat what Supervisor Rinaldi went over, that we are considering. They're pretty safe as far as the litigation and, you know, impact goes. And I am not sure if by implementing all this, we're going to resolve the issue of affordable housing. So, this is kind of a generic question for Measure E. If we go back to the resolution that staff brought to, to this board a few months back and decide that for whatever language we agree on as a board, we're going to implement the intent of the voters and, and approve that resolution, it, would it be safe and is that the best practice to take that and ratify it by a voter initiative, so we are solid, so we can't be litigated anymore by any party? So, this board?
Until the next initiative.
[laughing].
Seriously. It's called, that's land use planning by initiative.
Okay.
Not good, usually.
So.
So, what?
Let's not.
I don't make comments when you're talking, please.
Can you?
Sorry, Sheba.
That's okay. So, is that a good practice? Have other jurisdictions done that? And what do you think about it?
So, I, I can't necessarily speak to how other jurisdictions have, have dealt with this issue. I think it varies largely based on the specificity included in the particular initiative at issue. But I, I would say, one of the advantages of, of some board-adopted statement of interpretation of the measure would be guidance to your staff in implementing the measure. As it stands now, you will be seeing projects coming through that staff is going to be doing their best to apply Measure E per your board's direction. And so, you'll be making decisions on how to, how to apply, how Measure E applies on kind of a project-by-project basis. There's nothing wrong with that approach. It, it, it will get you to the same point ultimately, which is a, a set of actions that ultimately provide guidance on how to apply Measure E. But I think it's worth considering, if there was some desire, this board, to reconsider the, the action from August 30th, staff could work to bring that back in some revised form, given the, the new information presented to you. But I think that, like, like I said, ultimately, you're going to have items coming to you that will give you the opportunity to provide your direction on what, you know, how Measure E should be applied on any given project.
So, I am hoping as a board that we will give that direction to staff, so we do have an adopted resolution that we can all move forward. So, there are many benefits to have that in place. But what I'm asking you is the next step to it. Can we take that to the voters and ratify it, so we are solid at that point? When we adopt the resolution, we take it to the next level, we run it by the voters, and here we are.
Yeah, that, now what I'm struggling with a bit, you know, again, the idea behind it is that your, your action would simply be providing your interpretation of this voter-adopted measure, that you wouldn't be going above and beyond what the voters had passed.
Right, but we may be litigated because of our action. That's one of the things that we were told, that you may be litigated. So, what I'm saying is to, to get ahead of this litigation process, if we take that to the voters, then we can't be litigated anymore.
Sure you can.
After it gets approved.
I do have, just to tag on to that, well, my, my thought, because I understand your line of thinking, I think you're looking for an added measure of confirmation or insurance after, after action by the board. My question would, is more about timing. It could not be just at a special election. It would have to be aligned with some, you know.
November election.
Is that true? Could not be a special election? It couldn't be done outside of a normal election cycle?
I mean, the, the board can call for a special election.
I just can in this case?
Yeah, I, I mean, if you were, I think what you're contemplating is, you know, a board-sponsored initiative of sorts.
Hold on. An initiative to define an initiative.
To ratify. It's not defined.
Basically, yes. I mean, it would be.
Mike, let's be honest, we're, we're, an initiative to define an initiative.
I just wanted to know if there was an additional time penalty in, in seeking a, a, a measure of insurance?
And I'm, I'm not saying necessarily spend money on it if it can be part of a, an existing election, if you time it properly.
Every bit we would be part of costs you money, you have to pay your share of every election.
Yes, but to have a special election is going to cost us a lot more.
More money, yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, I think that, to the extent that you're trying to gain some, some additional insurance, some comfort with any action of the board, I think part of it, you will, will ultimately obtain via the resolution of the pending court action. So, that will give you some court guidance on what you can and can't do with respect to Measure E.
Gotcha.
So, I, I think that's probably the, the best you're going to get. You'll also see, as you approve or disapprove projects that come to your board in 2017, that will also provide an opportunity for confirmation of your, the validity of your action.
As I said, I would like to get ahead of all those obligations.
Yes, I, I understand that. I think that there's, it is a difficult path to follow, given you are, as Supervisor McElloco noted, already working with an adopted initiative. If there was some desire of the board to pursue, I think it's item G or the, the final item on the list, the, the new item, the new initiative, that's one thing, but it sounds as if that is something that you're, the board is reluctant to do at this point in time. So, I'm not sure I can provide you a path to what you're trying to achieve to get some voter ratification of board, of a board-adopted implementation or interpretation statement?
You're taking politics to the next level.
My apologies.
So, someone asked during public comment, why aren't we here today? That was a good question. Got plenty of inventory. That's right. We're here today, though, because you can have inventory to accommodate for your affordable housing, but you cannot make the process developing said inventory more onerous or more complicated or harder to develop. You can't do that. That's why we're here today, in part. So, the question is, does Measure E make developing affordable housing, particularly any, in part, or all of the lands on this inventory list, more onerous or challenging to develop? We heard from somebody who's got a project in the works. They're developing housing that would be quote-unquote "affordable" by definition, yet they gave specific and direct examples of how that process is harder. This is a bigger issue because by definition, the state could decertify our housing element because we have an initiative that's voted approved by the voters that would come into conflict with the policies that you can or cannot do in regard. That's an issue. That's one part. The, the second part is that we can't implement intent. We're bound by federal law, state law, ordinances, policies, things we can't do, the Brown Act. We have to implement all kinds of things, but we cannot implement intent. And we heard from the proponents, their intent of Measure E was not to make small projects unbuildable, not to make affordable housing more buildable, but yet because, in my opinion, in regards to this statement, Measure E was so poorly written, it has. I've talked to some proponents. Measure E was not designed to trip up the small projects, it was designed to trip up the big projects, in my opinion. And when you break it down, a big project that has hundreds of homes has financial wherewithal to make the improvements that they need to make. Small projects do not. So, if we were to go down and, and say, you know what, let's, let's talk to proponents and deal with the intent of Measure E, we've heard from a pro right here, then Measure E wouldn't affect anything, because big projects can build the infrastructure needed. Small projects would seem to be in a death spiral over this. If I'm trying to build a 15-unit project and I've got to make a million-dollar improvement, even though the impact of my small project is a fraction of what the overall impact is, I can't do it. So, whether you pick A or B or C or D or whatever the case may be, it doesn't change the core issue here. We have a core issue. Measure E does make developing affordable housing more onerous. We've heard an example of that. It's a fact, in my, well, I won't say it's a fact. It's, it's.
Pretty close.
Pretty close to a fact. I would say that based on everything I've seen, I'm not going to say it's a fact. That's an issue, that we need to, to be cerebral about moving forward in time in regards to our housing element. That's one issue. But Measure E, it's, it's poorly written. Poorly written in that it would obviously appear that even the proponents of it have said that the way it's written and the way it's discerned into how it spells out and what it affects are contrary to what apparently their intent was. Supervisor Rieckham, do you have something?
Well, I just, as we move towards either a recommendation or direction, I just want to clarify that the agenda as written today allows us to do that. In two places, it clearly states, and this is in the agenda makeup of itself, refers to the Brown Act 54954.2. The numbered items on the agenda give a brief description of each item of the business to be transacted or discussed. Recommendations of the staff as shown do not prevent the board from taking other action. So, obviously, we, we have the ability to take action as long as the item is, I got a general description of what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then secondly, if you, legislative text as well, consider options and provide direction. That's what I interpret we're supposed to be doing today. I don't intend on taking any other action, but I may. But that's what was asked of us, was it not?
Yes, sir.
So, I read it right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just get confused sometimes. Given, you know, given that, and in the discussion that we've had, go ahead, do you want to?
I just want to add that I think the comment was, when you read the text on the agenda, it doesn't say, "Give direction to staff." It just says, "Discuss."
The legislative text does. I mean, you got to read the whole.
I completely agree with you.
I just get tired of the same conversation that we're violating the Brown Act. I've been in meetings, not only here, for four years, but for 20 years now, and I've seen poorly agen, poorly-written agendas and, and potential Brown Act violations. This county is very stringent about how they agendize something and how it's noticed and clearly gives us the opportunity to make direction. I wish somebody else would read the Brown Act once in a while. Anyway, sorry.
I, I think what you're saying, Supervisor Rieckham, we are not limited to A through I.
Absolutely not.
Obviously, we can incorporate some, we can modify some or.
We can give direction on the options that are there.
We can give direction on, on how, as long as our direction isn't in violation of federal state laws or SB 375 or whatever the case may be, which.
So, given that, what I, what I heard most everybody, I think, saying so far is, and this is what I had, was A, B, D, G are all in the ballpark. And, and I think F is.
A, B, D.
F was at least. G is not, as far as you're concerned.
D, D is, yeah, I think D is.
G?
I thought G was.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with G because it, it deals with low-to-moderate-income housing. I think that's one of our challenges here, but.
You know, I think it's slippery slope.
Maybe I should say at least it get, it, it might need to be further analyzed, because what I, what I'm hearing or saying is a hybrid of options that allow for us to meet our affordable housing needs under the confines, and I'm going to call it confines, of Measure E, which was also determined in Measure Y years ago, and that's what happened to happen when Measure Y was enacted. And that'll give staff, hopefully, that'll have to come back to us, because you'll analyze these things and come back to us with the best plan, and we'll approve that or not. And then, we'll then give staff that direction to utilize that as projects come forward. In the meantime, they're doing the best they can based on what we've already, the direction that we've given, which is inclusive of a determination of LOSF levels or travel-demand levels or whatever you want to call them, soon-to-be-vehicle mile, miles traveled levels in the future. In our determination, our travel-demand model, yes, we accepted it in, in the analysis of it under Measure E at the last meeting. So, yes, that's been determined. So, what I'm hearing us say is come back with the best combination, and I'm leaning a little bit on the exemption side, because if we don't start some of these exemptions, obviously, we've got to, we've, we've got to use our offset monies. If we don't start exempting, we are not going to comply with our housing element. And I sit in Secog and other meetings and, and it's getting more restrictive, not getting less. So, how we're going to comply with some of these restrictions or conditions is yet, is really going to be, yet to be determined. going to be yet to be determined as we move forward. But our housing element and the fear of the state telling us what to do is looming, and I think that's legitimate. H is going to work its way through no matter what, obviously, and it's in the process, and it might be easy, you talked about saving taxpayer money, that we just back off and don't, but we owe it to our development community to have some options for them to at least be able to try to proceed. And I think legally, we have that obligation because they own land and they have the right to apply for a project, and we have to determine legally how they can proceed. So I'm not sure how that fits in that overall direction of, but some combination of those to allow for that, and I'm laying heavily on the exemption side myself.
So you talk about exempting, you talk about the elements of the affordable housing aspect, is that correct? Yes. And by exempting that, I think that we, when we run the risk of having the state decertify our housing elements, that's a huge problem. That may help Supervisor...
So I want to ask the same question as I did when we were discussing option G from county council. So I want to make sure you're okay with the litigation possibilities and potential that G may cause, so.
Hey, we're going according to that.
For me, I'm not making my decision based upon what I think we may or may not get sued upon or threat of litigation.
Well, I think it's a fair question, though.
It's a fair question, go ahead. Yeah, no, I'm just making my, but go ahead.
I usually make my decisions based on being, taking the safest route that would benefit everyone that we can move forward.
All these years, I never knew, all right.
As we noted earlier, there's potential risk associated with that approach. But we could, we'd happily evaluate it before making a final decision. In fact, I would just remind you, I don't think you're being asked to make any final decisions on this today. I think you're providing some general direction to staff. As the staff memo indicates, staff intends to come back to you with additional information on the timing, the budget for each of these potential options to address some of these consistency issues with measure E. So I think that if there are some issues that you want further evaluated, there's no reason why that couldn't be done before you take some final action on these things.
Supervisor Veerkamp, to be honest with you, the only way that we can reach our affordable housing, that element, regardless of measure E or measure Y or anything, it's going to be the exemption.
Absolutely.
Anything else, you know, all the other A, B, D, everything that we talked about, it really, measure E does not play a role in there. Yes, it impacts the housing element, but, you know, we have a problem, we have an existing problem with affordable housing, and yes, the exemption is going to be completely solving that problem.
Supervisor Renelli? Yeah, no, I, you know, I did not expect with nine items that we, the board, would come in here with, you know, at least some consensus solidly on a number of them. The ones that I was pensive about, I am all for further analysis. You know, I like what Supervisor Veerkamp said. I think staff has heard from us on these items sufficiently to maybe come back with the right combination, and some of them might actually be more further analysis. In fact, all of them are going to be, you know, another level of analysis, but, you know, I think that was, you know, that's the safest and most responsible thing for us to do at this point.
So I have an observation, we're missing one supervisor, and Supervisor McElloco, it's his almost last meeting with us, one to the last.
Yeah, I don't have to live with all those, you guys do, so...
That helps, it's only three of us to call the shots today, so...
I guess I would ask staff if they think that you're comfortable with what we've discussed and have the general direction. And I just have to emphasize, well, no matter which way we go, we're still spending more money that is not going to our roads, is not going, this is general fund money, not fixing some of our other problems. And I know we're working off our strategic plan when we're working off our CIP and others, yeah, our CIPs, as we develop those, staff is now integrating those, so we're getting a lot of more prioritization getting done, which is good, but all of this continues to cost more money that we could be utilizing somewhere else in fixing some of these other problems that people bring up all the time. I just want to make sure that's really clear.
I want to make another point, too. When you talk about affordable housing, I think we shouldn't limit our focus on houses that you can purchase or be built. Affordable housing comes in different forms, apartments. The demand for apartments in Eldorado Hills is through the roof right now, raising the prices on it. So if you have land that somebody owns, it's approved, it's contemplated to be multifamily, they can go in, pull permit, build the apartment building, and away we go, and they're not doing it because by the time you add up the TIM fees, the EID hookup fees, the fire fees, the school fees, and all those other fees, you're not going to spend a dollar to make 75 cents, it's just not going to work. And I think that was the point that was made by one of the developers, said, we have land, well, obviously, we're paying property taxes on it, which has no value. And there was somebody who was going to, owned a property in Cameron Park, and they were going to build a duplex, and they said, I can get this much for rent, and all excited, went down, realized they got to buy, it's a duplex, two water meters at 40 grand apiece, two fire fees, two house fees, two this and that. By the time you add up $150,000 in fees or whatever it was, plus the cost of building it, they said, my realtor told me it's not worth anything. It's another dead property they're paying property taxes on. So to your point about the fees is one thing, but secondarily, when we take what few properties there are, whether it's apartments, whether it's multifamily to build housing that's affordable and make it more expensive, because now if you want to build an apartment building, you've got to make the improvements. So I think that's where we run into problems with, why are we here today? These other topics are good. And I appreciate Supervisor Frenzen for...
Pointing out...
Showing you the door?
Yeah. Part of me's already been to that door a while ago, but I'm still here.
You are.
I am. But you guys got to live with this. You guys just sit there and sort this out. So, I mean, I think we're all on the same page, but at the same time, intent, you can't implement intent.
And I know Supervisor Novosel's working on the housing element discussion in Tahoe, so this is important as we move forward.
Tahoe's got a huge problem, their problem in Tahoe is worse than ours. You have no inventory, and what inventory is, is these great big multimillion-dollar homes overlooking the lake. That's not the type of housing they need in Tahoe. They need Tahoe where either rents $1,000, $1,500 or a price point where you can afford it, 350,000, 250,000. I'll tell you from my own experience, on this modest salaries being a supervisor, I can't afford most of the homes for sale in Eldorado Hills. It's just beyond my price point, can't. And one of the few that I can afford is what I'm living in. It is what it is. So anyways, does somebody want to...
Staff's good with the direction that we've given, so as long as they...
Yeah, we heard, options A, oh, I'm sorry, A, B, and...
D?
D, and D will come back to you annually, we'll be able to look at that as we go, but A and B is what we'll look at, work with the CAO's office as part of particularly the upcoming year budget and staffing and resources and be able to bring that information back to you.
Supervisor Frenzen, did you take F off?
We, to F, we actually do watch that pretty closely anyways, annually.
Well, D and F are sort of givens, if you're following.
Yeah, in the event that we would need additional inventory that we can't achieve, we would be looking at that, so.
So we just need to do our due diligence on managing our inventory.
Correct.
So it's not really off the list, it's just, we just need to be hypersensitive.
The ones that are going to cost money are A and B and staff time, those are the ones we'll be able to provide more information on.
It's a good practice.
Yep.
Good? Got everything you need?
Thanks to staff for the memo and the presentation and everything else, Shana. Thank you.
Counsel, we good? We're good. CAO?
Just if now is the right time, just a reminder that tomorrow's meeting starts at 9:00 AM. It was posted on the addenda that way, just for members of the public to be aware.
How's our, what do we have in terms of our, we had a closed session item from today to tomorrow, do we...
We continued item two to tomorrow, we'll hear that in the afternoon.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.